And good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, June first, twenty twenty one, and I'd like to call to order the regular finance personnel committee meeting of the village of North Hudson. Roll call, please.
Trustees Nelson.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
Trustees Ice.
Here.
Alrighty then. Item two is minutes, regular finance personnel committee meeting from four May. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any amendments, corrections, or additions? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Claims review and recommendation?
Stan, can I move to approve the June one, twenty twenty one, nonrecurring claims of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifteen cents?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Is there comments or questions?
Anything out of ordinary, Melissa?
No, this one doesn't include any big expenditures at all. It's just kind of the usual bills.
Yeah, that's kind of nice.
Real quick on the capital funds, the four fifteen for fifty-three eighty-two, that does include the cost of temporary easements up for the Wisconsin Street North project. But that's about the only thing out of the ordinary.
Okay. Okay, no any further discussion? Hearing none, Brian?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I'll also make unanimous, yes. And heck, we did better than five minutes. I'll declare this meeting adjourned at six thirty-two. And good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, June first, and I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the village of North Hudson to order. I have a short invocation, as Lord protect the freedom we still experience in our nation today. Please seal our land and give us wisdom on how to move forward. Roll call, please.
Trustees Matts.
Present.
McGurran.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Noonan. Here. Pike.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
Trustees Ice.
Here.
Thank you. Item two, review the and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of four May.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
A second.
Amy had her hand up too, so we got that doubled up. Okay, is there any additions, correcting, corrections, or amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Item three is comments from the floor, opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities, or on or not on today's agenda. Is there anyone that isn't on the agenda that has anything they'd like to bring up? I don't see anyone on my screen. And the sun's gonna move here in a couple of minutes behind the next tree, so I won't be so washed out. Just bear with me. I'm out in the deck and it's too nice to be indoors. Okay, but item four, except exceptions to the noise ordinance during Highway thirty-five project, discussion and possible approval.
And I'd like to move to temporarily suspend the prohibition on construction work during certain quiet hours set forth in section seventy-six parentheses D to allow construction to proceed on the Highway thirty-five project outside of the restricted hours. This suspension relates only to the Highway thirty-five project. This temporary suspension will be for five days. They may not be consecutive. And the contractor will give the village administrator two weeks' notice prior to exceeding the current ordinance.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Okay, all kinds of seconds. I hope Jess, she can sort them out, I'm pretty sure. Okay, any further discussion on this? I think everybody got the statement about how this cutting works and everything like that. You know, I'd like to, you know, make sure that the public knows that it is not going to be four or five days in a row. There could be a month in between, two, three weeks in between, so. And hopefully, the weather will cooperate, and we won't have to worry about issues until all hours of the morning.
Okay. Do we have any clarification that two weeks' notice prior to exceeding the current ordinance? I think I felt partially it was dependent on the temperature, right? And are they gonna know two weeks in advance whether, you know, there's gonna be cutting at ninety-degree weather? You know, you understand my question there? I mean, I mean, I feel that when it's gonna be shorter than two weeks for them to know when they're gonna be cutting and not cutting.
So they're gonna be cutting, and they will know two weeks prior to putting the pavement down. And so they'll be able to give us that notice. They know when they're gonna pour. They don't know exactly right now, but they know, they will know when they're going to pour. And what they said to me today was, they will be able to give her a two-week notice before they would possibly have to cut into our quiet hours.
Yeah, so they're given like a two-week notice of when they could cut.
Right.
Okay, they word could is the key, because you know, it was temperature, believing the stress, depending on the temperature, when to do it, so forth. That's right, that we, you know, leading up to this point with the main discussion of why they need to do it at night.
If the temperatures are hot enough, they will have to go out there and do it into the wee hours of the morning.
Correct.
Because it cures too fast, then? Is that the, or not fast enough, or I mean?
I'm not a concrete guy. I'm just telling you what they told me.
No, and that's, you know, that's kind of what they've stressed all along, is that, you know, they don't have any, you know. They just need the windows.
Yeah, the next step, Stan. So the village administrator, two weeks' notice prior to exceeding the current ordinance. Okay, then what do we do after that?
What do you mean?
Do we notify the residents that's gonna happen, or do they?
Well, Melissa's gonna post it up on, you know, where the rest of the thirty-five construction information is, correct? Melissa, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And just a thought, maybe if they aren't not able to give a full two weeks, I don't know if you want to put a minimum of like minimum of a five-day notice, a two, two-week notice?
Yeah, or even, I mean, potentially, maybe, I would say that's something maybe done a two-day notice. I mean, you tell them, two days, they're gonna know it's gonna be ninety-degree weather, because how can you judge temperature? Maybe you can. I mean, and depending on when they're pouring the cement and everything. That's what I meant by as far as I think they should, their proposal was it gives a two-day notice. And now it's a two-week? I mean, so I just don't understand, you know, I'm questioning that.
My hope was, so I've also talked a little bit with them, that once they give us the two-week notice, though, I've been asking and emailing questions about stuff like that. So I think that they're gonna give me a quick notice while sending it to Melissa and post it on Facebook too. Where, you know, two days before, you have a better chance of knowing the weather, but even with two days, you're not gonna really be able to give a standard shot like what day it's supposed to be. But that's something I'm kind of working on trying to figure out the proper times and dates of it.
The way I understood it is they will know two weeks in advance of when they're gonna be cutting, and that's gonna be allowed, whether it's during normal, quiet hours or not. And that's what they're gonna try and give us a notice on. And as to whether they go into the wee hours of the morning, that is gonna be totally temperature-dependent. So this is a broader way of looking at it, I guess, Tim.
Okay. But you do understand my question, because as, you know, the two weeks now just confuses me now, because she's gonna post it two weeks, saying they're gonna be doing this, and yet they might not even do it at all, yet they could be cutting it and.
Well, they're gonna cut it. That's what I'm saying. They're going to cut it. It's just a matter of.
Residents like to know closer to when they're gonna be cutting it, I mean, instead of two weeks in advance? You don't understand my question behind that? I mean, I'm living, I know we're gonna hear it down here, I live, to be honest with you, everyone's gonna be hearing it, but.
Yeah. I think, well, the guy was trying to say today that we will know two weeks in advance.
Of when they're gonna pour.
When they're gonna, yeah.
But they're not gonna, they're not gonna pour if it's, if it's downpour raining for three days straight over that, that time window is what Tim's getting at.
That's where I'm getting at. You're trying to depend on weather, a lot of this is. I mean, that's what they told us. I just think it's not clear enough to me. That's my feeling behind it. Especially coming out of the last meeting, we talked about the two-day notice. So.
Are, are any of those guys on here?
Barry's on.
Barry?
Yep.
Do you, can you elaborate to Tim's part of the question?
So when we get, we get notice that we're gonna pave, the first thing that's gonna start is we're gonna set line on the road, and then we're gonna trim the roadway. With all intention of when we're paving, at that, as soon as we set line and start trimming, we know when we're gonna pave. We're within a day or two of paving. Weather will play a big dictator on it. And once we start paving, you know, we'll know based on weather when we're gonna saw, based on cure time. And I can't put that any farther in advance, because we don't know if it'll be cool or hot. If it's real hot, we'll get on it earlier and we'll be done earlier. If it's cool, overcast, it's gonna get on later, it's gonna be done later.
My point behind that, Barry, is that I don't understand the two weeks' notice. I don't understand more, if you told me I had two days' notice. You understand that point, Barry?
Well, I can tell you approximately when we're gonna be there on the schedule. I mean, when they're putting gravel down and I'm putting curb in and sidewalk, I'll know approximately when I'm gonna be pouring. It's not gonna be pinpointed the exact date, because there's a lot of variables. You know, the meeting this morning is, I'm supposed to be able to start pouring curb possibly end of next week. And I'm gonna put my curb in and my sidewalk in, and then I'll have a good idea of when I'm gonna go. But it all based on weather over that period.
I guess Tim's just asking that if you could try to during those two-week period, give us more of a specific date that we could inform the town more would be very helpful.
Yeah, we can try. I mean, but it won't be, you know, it's a three-day window at that point, three-to-four-day window, you know, that far out.
Three-to-four-day windows better than two weeks, is what we're kind of trying to say.
Yep, we can do that. Every, at the weekly meetings, we talk about it. You know, what we're doing. We'll know exactly in that weekly meeting where we're gonna be the week before and the week of.
Any further discussion?
I still think it's really unclear what this two weeks means. Do we just need to take two weeks out? Like, two weeks seems irrelevant. It sounds more like there's a very specific system until pouring, and that that's very easy to identify unless there's a serious weather change. And then the uncertainty is the time for cutting between pouring and cutting, but it's still a pretty short window. But I would agree with Tim that I don't really understand what this two weeks is signifying. Maybe we just need to get rid of it.
That, and Barry, that came from Tony, when I was talking to Tony today.
Okay, yeah. It's hard, the two weeks is, you know, it's a scheduling thing. We schedule out, you know, three weeks in our meetings. And that's where Tony's coming from. In two weeks, we have a good idea where we're going. Realistically, to pinpoint the day I'm gonna pave is the day I start setting line. And that's about three to four days.
That's, that to me, Barry, is sufficient. We're changing the ordinance for the noise after nine o'clock, so. And that's where we left last meeting, with more toward that type of timeframe.
So do you want them to, you guys wanna amend this to say three to four days instead of two weeks?
We'll give them a week.
They meet on Mondays. I mean, they know their activities, they meet every Monday, go through the project, what's happening that week, I mean.
It could be a week. Yeah, but you gotta understand that is, it might be the previous Monday that we're starting to set line and trimming, and we might pour the following Tuesday. So Monday, you know, every Monday, we will give an update of what we're doing. You know, whether that's a week notice plus or exactly a week, you know, but we'll know on every Monday what our plan is at the meeting.
Anybody else?
So can we just leave it more wide open? Saying, a weekly update on our website, please watch, and cutting will take place approximately, you know.
Four days.
Three to four days after pouring. And just have people watch for that, and then once we know, we can post it again on the website for people who look.
I, I can give you weekly updates at the meeting of what we're doing. You know, on every Monday, we can give you a weekly update. You know, the city's there, Cedar's there, you know, to, we can actually send it off to the city of what we're planning to do and how we're doing it.
So are you guys wanting me to amend that from fourteen to three to four days?
I don't think that's fair.
What he was trying to do was, he was giving us a big window, like, all right, look, we gotta order concrete. We gotta have all this stuff in place. And he would, you know, I'm sure, you know, everybody, the factors are there to, you know, with weather and stuff like that. But, you know, like you said, every week he's gonna give an update, and I know the chief's been attending, I'm sure Patrick's been attending. I mean, we will know, I mean, every Monday, what exactly is gonna go on. Is that correct, Barry?
That is correct.
And I, I think he's asked for the two weeks, and I think he understands that all we're asking for is more of a specific time during that two weeks, which it seems like he hears us and will let us know that. So yes, we're giving him two weeks, but yes, he's gonna give us a more specific time during that two weeks.
That is correct.
I can ask you a question. If you could take a look at what you read as the ordinance, Brian, I felt like the two weeks was a minimum timeframe. And I'm not sure that what you're talking about fits with what the ordinance read.
I said move to temporarily suspend the prohibition on construction work during certain quiet hours set forth in section seventy-six to allow construction to proceed on Highway thirty-five project outside of the restricted hours. This suspension relates only to the Highway thirty-five project. This temporary suspension will be for five days, and they may not be consecutive. And the contractor will give the village administrator two weeks' notice prior to exceeding the current ordinance.
They're gonna exceed the nine o'clock, right, Mark? That's, that's what he's saying there, right?
That's what I'm hearing, but I guess, I don't know that Barry will be able to give two weeks' notice to the administrator is what I'm hearing in the meeting. So I don't know if you want to say a week, or that's the verbiage that I'm getting hung up on as far as making sure that we, if you put the ordinance in place, that it actually is.
Right. So you, you would like us to amend it to one week?
I, I, I would go with that since our communication happens every Monday, and it shortens that window, you know.
Okay, understood. So I, I'll read, I'll amend the motion to say the contractor will give the village administrator one week's notice prior to exceeding the current ordinance. And I'll need a second, I guess.
Whoever seconded your original motion will have to agree to that.
Who's?
I'll second, I guess, or Kirk, I think we tied.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I believe we can do a, all in favor of the or, or adjustment to the ordinance as amended. Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Okay. Item five is the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two class A slash B alcohol beverage licenses, cigarette licenses, amusement permits, approval requested.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Amy, discussion?
There was a question that was posed about Cozy not being in here, and Melissa, I don't know if you heard that, that we assume that, you know, when they, I don't know, it's just being turned over to them. So I, do they have to come back and do one for themselves, or?
No, so what happened was, Cozy is off of there right now. Their current license goes through June thirtieth, so they do still have a license. So that, if they're okay through June thirtieth. There was some contradictory information on one of the forms that was filled out by the new agent that was discovered late. And so we just, I need to reach out to that person tomorrow and get some clarification on that, have him fix one of the forms for the background check. So I will reach out to that person tomorrow. The chief and I will, you know, get that corrected, and then it may have to come back. It may require a special board meeting in June to get that one passed. But yeah, there was just, it takes a while to get all the information in from all the bars, and then to get everything. There's a lot of information that's missing usually, so it takes a while to get it all together. So it was kind of discovered late today, so that's why that one's not on there. But they do still have a license through the end of June for sure. So that will, that one will come back.
Good. And there, Paul, now we, this one, we don't have to read every one of the licenses, right? Can we do this with suspending rules, or we need to?
Melissa and I talked about this, and she said there's, there's a list included in the information. And you can just make that list part of the motion. You don't have to read every single one.
Melissa, the type of license that remained the same from, from the last year? No, no, no changes, modifications to any of them?
Do any of these renewals?
Correct.
Uh, well, I mean, GOV's changed. Cozy will change. But I believe the agent changed for the village, and but that one, the paperwork all worked out okay, so that, that's about it. Otherwise, they were basically the same.
And the type of license, of course, what they're selling, remain the same as far as the classes and everything, right?
The classes are all the same, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah.
You're just gonna want to reflect in the minutes the names of the licenses that were granted.
Okay. And so we written motion has been made, seconded. No further discussion? All in favor?
Stan, I will abstain from this vote for being the owner of COVs.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there? Okay, all in favor of the licenses being approved? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Item six, appeal of operator's license, denial of Jennifer Groves, discussion, possible approval. Is there a motion?
And just so you're aware, she is on the meeting, if you have questions.
It's on there someplace, yep.
Okay, so how, I don't have a
motion here.
Motion here. So I don't know how to make a motion for this. Move to approve, or, and then we go to discussion? Okay, move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion. Chief, you got any background for us that you'd like to share?
I'll just bring forward that originally I issued a memorandum to the village administrator back on April eighth, after reviewing the application and the information in the application. I had recommended a denial at that point, which the administrator had followed through on. And then there is the appeal that's before you. You have the letter from the applicant, and I believe also submitted by the applicant was a probation violation order from the county of La Sueur in the state of Minnesota that showed some information about the fact that there is, there was an extension of our probationary period that was a sentencing from the DWI that was a conviction out of the state of Minnesota. The information that I had used for my denial was the fact that under the current resolution that's in place for me to make some decisions on an event that occurs within the last three years prior to the application, which the DWI did fall within those three years. And then also that there was some incorrect information listed on the application was the beginning of that. Since the application appeal has come through, I did have a chance to reach out through means that are open to the public on the Minnesota website and was able to duplicate the information that the applicant provided, so I can tell you that that information is accurate on the extension of probation. And then just did look up the information on the actual conviction. I was able to reach out to her probation agent and to discuss the reasons for that, and obviously, she can contest or confirm the information that I'm providing. I can speak with the probation agent out of La Sueur County for the applicant, and it looks like the violation was just, it wasn't a, an additional charge or anything, any new charges, just that there was some lack of communication with the agent, or there was some issues where there was not the systematic communication that was required by the agent, and then also that there is a required MAD impact panel that was required by the court that had not yet been completed. So that's the information that I have moving into this appeal for the board to consider. And obviously, the applicant has the right to appeal to you and has the right to, to talk to you about the decision that you're about to make. And so unless there's other questions for me, I will mute myself and allow the applicant to speak.
One question, Chief, how long is this suspension of whatever, going, I'm not trying to find, trying to find it from the documents. So she's trying to suspend us, but how long is it for if?
The probation was extended for one year, and that will go through April fourteenth of twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, thank you.
Though, yeah, the only reason that I did not complete the MAD class yet was because of COVID. So, but that will be completed as soon as I can.
Good. Anyone else? Amy?
So would it be possible to, if people do want to consider this, waiting until after that course was completed?
The course takes about an hour and a half, and it's a matter of getting in somewhere. It's not a matter of, yeah, it's not a matter of money or anything else. Like, I just didn't want to complete it. It's a matter of waiting. It's like a waiting game, like, as of this point. Especially in Minnesota.
So it's my understanding that this is a violation of our ordinance, that the ordinance sets out that this would not be approved, and that's why the chief did not approve it. And so what we're being asked to consider is overriding an ordinance that was put in place, I would imagine, to support the safety of the city and to the village, and to address liability of the village in providing these kinds of decisions.
Yeah, I understand. I understand completely. I am, I've never, you know, I've never, all I can say for that is I've never been in trouble before. It was a bad decision. I've, I've been trying to keep on task with it. Of course, it's in La Sueur County, and I'm down here. So it's, it's a very hard thing to keep the communication line open. You know, I don't do it, not intending not to do it. I, I, it's just something that I've been working on, and that I'm gonna succeed through.
One correction that I'll make, Mary, is that it's not an ordinance that was passed, it was a resolution, and so it's more guidelines. So I just want to make sure that we're talking in the, in the correct terms.
Thank you.
We also have had other petitions to, you know, to change our minds, and we have done so. I mean, you know, there's a lot of young people have had, you know, she said it, it was a bad decision. I mean, that that happens to a lot of folks, and we have, you know, if they're working, they're, it's a lot better for those, the people to be working. those, the people to be working than it is to be, you know, not working. And apparently she's a, uh has been a bartender prior to this. And uh, you know, I mean, uh, I think uh, you know, it's worth the consideration to uh give her a chance to uh say, hey, I made dumb decisions, I don't cha- I don't want to do that ever again.
Uh chief, would you would say that, or would you say that, that you call them like a red, there's more than a DWI for red flags for stuff like this? Or the automatic appeal, I guess I would ask?
Can you repeat your question? I'm sorry, there was a noise behind me.
Sorry, um uh it's not just OWI, there's other quote unquote red flags that uh bring this up um automatic denial up right away or going to appeal, or is it just OWI?
Uh related to all cases, not this specific case, yes, there are other items that can be used to make determination. Obviously, the incomplete application, sometimes people are trying to hide information that I find in the background investigation. Um if there were underage alcohol or if you had been convicted pri- uh prior for uh providing alcohol to a minor in a, you know, in a bar, those types of things. Um, you know, I think two things come to mind as I listen to the discussion, one being that, you know, this is not a, a license that we're we're judging the person and, and what their activities are. It's a license where we're allowing someone to distribute alcohol to others in the village of North Hudson and be reasonable and responsible and making sure that they don't provide those people with too much alcohol to the point that they, you know, uh over serve them to make good decisions on whether or not they serve them. Um and I think, you know, the point's been made that, that there was some um that there were some issues on, on judgment. And I, I guess the only thing that I will point out, and again, I, I'm just reading the facts, is that in her letter in the appeal, it says that she had one alcoholic drink before operating, she was not intoxicated, but she did not deny that she was under the influence. And, and I guess that's where the decision has to come from this board, is she then has to make the decision whether or not the person that she's serving is intoxicated or under the influence. And in the police reports from La Sua County Sheriff's Office, there was evidence that there was much more than one drink that had been consumed. So just some things to take into consideration on judgment.
I, I would also say if we have a resolution to this effect, there's, there's a reason that there's a resolution. And if we don't want this resolution, then we should, we should change the resolution. But that is what the resolution is. And there would need to be some pretty strong extenuating circumstances for a, a resolution to not be followed, otherwise there's no purpose to it.
Well, uh most of the resolutions, I mean, that I've been involved in are, there are more guidelines rather than uh or support of uh certain, you know, uh things that are going on around here, it doesn't have the, the force of an ordinance that uh that uh we uh, you know, where you would have to change the resolution. This is a guideline for the chief to be able to say yea or nay. Uh for, you give him some point to start with, you know, I mean, uh, and he always does a great job of his due diligence, so I uh and like I said, we've got a history of uh, of allowing uh other folks that have made bad decisions continue with their employment and uh in covering uh in helping out the local businesses.
But if I understand this correctly, our chief has said nay, you said yea or nay, he has said nay, is that true?
So again, I can only recommend approval or denial, I don't make the decision, so my
Recommendation was denial, isn't that correct, chief?
Based on the resolution and the information in that resolution, yes.
All right, thank you.
Uh chief, do you have any idea how many of these we have, or anyone, how many of these we have approved?
In my fifteen and a half years as a chief of police, all appeals have been approved, but they all have absolutely different sets of circumstances, so that, that's up to you, how you want to make that decision.
If I could just say something, um I am, I'm only a, I'm a very little person, I'm only, you said that, that that it was obvious that I had more than one drink, but I'm only five foot and I didn't eat anything that day prior to dinner. So, I mean, I, if I could do it all over again, I wouldn't, definitely not. I mean, I, I have learned a lot from this experience, so I can't say that I'm, I'm perfect. But I, I do consider myself a hard worker and I do have a little head on my shoulders.
And chief, I want to confirm that the commission was, conviction was two thousand eighteen, at the end of two thousand eighteen, so basically almost two thousand nineteen and she's been without this.
That's incorrect.
Okay.
The application was incorrect, it was a year later, it was actually December of two thousand nineteen where
Okay.
The stop was and the conviction, I believe, was early twenty twenty, I'd have to find that and I can.
Okay, thank you.
I believe it was twenty nineteen, I believe that was the typo, I, yeah, I believe he is right on that.
Dan, if I may just comment on the process here. Um, you know, the resolution was passed to allow the chief and the administrator to administratively uh allow the vast majority of these licenses. You know, the alternative was to have every single license come before the board for approval. So this was the process that was set up to sort of streamline things. And there were certain guidelines put in place with the resolution to, you know, allow, allow the chief to you know, pick these things up and then, you know, report on those. And it also allows the board to make a decision ultimately through this appeal process.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, that was because we used to have every, every application would come through the board, I believe. And that was, got to be tedious. And it, and it uh, in the, in Melissa, in the chief of thirty, I'm sure we passed plenty of them, or they've got plenty of them have gone through without the admin, you know, the only time they come before the board is, is through an appeal. Okay, I think we're done with this one, I think uh we better have a roll call vote here, cause we've got uh some questions, uh Phil?
Are we voting? I vote to approve the request, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion is to approve.
Yep. Uh, Mary?
No.
Kirk?
Yes.
Amy?
No.
Brian?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And uh I will say, yes, motion carries five to uh and on to our next item of business. Resolution twenty twenty one zero four, Department of Natural Resources. Review of Compliance Maintenance Annual Report to C Mar, Approval Requested.
Stan, I moved to approve res- resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero four.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill, uh and this is the annual uh report, uh Patrick, uh are you hanging around here someplace?
Yes, I'm here.
And uh was there any issues or anything that came up that uh we should be aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Or, you know, any, maybe a little background for the, for the new folks that uh have joined the board, so uh it's just so they know what's, what a C Mar actually is.
Sure, um, well, basically it's Nathan and I work on it. Um, cause it has to do with um financials, um and also with things that have, things that we've improved, um certain goals and stuff, not too many of those, that will be in our um C MOM, which is another acronym. But um, I'm not sure how the financial end of it turned out, cause Nathan works on that, I'll see that. I guess I could have seen it, but um, I haven't seen that yet. So um basically all I enter in is um our upgrades uh the, to the lift stations, um if we replace any pipes, anything like that. Um and if we are um using our C MOM, developing it, all that stuff, so.
Thank you, Patrick, is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, uh all in favor of the resolution twenty twenty one zero four, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, item eight. Preliminary Resolution twenty twenty one zero five. Declaring intent to special level or to levy special assessments on Sixth Street North State Highway thirty five, discussion possible approval, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Tim, uh discussion.
Kevin, do you want to explain this to them?
Sure, sure, I can step in, so basically this is the start of the special assessment process. So we have to adopt the resolution. So it all winds all the different tax ID numbers along the project corridor. So it's from the Lake Mellow Bridge up to the Summer Street. And the only thing that we're looking at special assessing as part of this project is just the sanitary sewer levels. Um, all the other items are either picked up by the village or with this project, a lot of the cost is going to be carried from the DOT. So overall, it's, you know, not going to be a huge dollar amount, but there will be some um assessments for those parcels, just for the sewer levels.
Any questions?
Comments?
What's, what's not a lot of money to you, Kevin?
So just from what I, you know, looked at some of the estimates and where the bids came in at, think it's going to be between two to three thousand per service, so per parcel.
And that can be paid over time?
Yeah, there is a um according to your assessment policy, it's all based on the dollar amount to how long they can, you know, pay those out. Whether it's two, three, four years, I'd have to look, you know, based on that figure to see what it would end up being.
Am I correct in uh assuming that this is a standard, you know, being new, it's the standard thing, the costs are um, I don't even know what the wording would be, but you know, they're figured out based on a formula and it's a pretty standard thing. And it's within the realm of what um the range would be for this kind of an assessment.
Yeah, so the village has a special assessment policy that they adopted. And we've done it on a number of the other projects that you've done over the years.
I just want to make sure, because I assume that, but
Yeah.
I need to know that, thank you.
And then this will come back, um this basically gives Cedar Corp the okay to do the report for this and to come up with the dollar amounts, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong. But and then if it's done by June Public Works, they'll review it. But otherwise, uh it'll come for a public hearing, all affected property owners will get notification of that report. It'll show them what they owe and, and have that information. And then July, there'll be a public hearing, um where those affected property owners can ask questions and things like that. That'll happen at the July village board meeting.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yep.
And Kevin.
Hey, Kevin, are we gonna have that by the fifteenth?
Yeah, that's what my goal is, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Hearing none, uh all in uh favor of the Resolution twenty twenty one to declare for special levy assessment, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, item number nine is uh new business from the board or uh from the board or staff. And the first is president's comments and uh I would just like to uh uh say, uh give first of all, a spam alert to uh, because uh certain emails are uh I was made aware over the weekend that uh a couple of our trustees were uh uh contact, supposedly contacted by me. And uh, and uh to ask them to uh, because I couldn't get to a phone or I couldn't do this or that, that I asked them to purchase four hundred dollar gift cards and then to get back, and then they were supposed to respond to the email for, for their instructions. Well, uh, I just like to say that somebody uh, it's a spoof that uh and then for everybody to watch their emails and stuff, because uh this was from a, you know, created Gmail account that must have been created my name. And uh I assured both the trustees and all of the trustees that uh you'll never see something like that coming from me. And uh we've, and I'm talking with Melissa and uh, and the chief, that's uh, there's ongoing different uh uh people hitting you up, I mean, Amazon, there's fake Amazons and different things like that. So uh please, everyone out there, uh if it uh, you know, I mean, Melissa had some great pointers to say, hey, if you see something like that, call the number, you know, I mean, that's on the back of your card, if it's a credit card thing or call the person that supposedly they're coming from and verify before you do anything like that. That's uh, that uh, you know, cause uh it was like, well, what do you want me to do? And I said, I don't want you to do anything, you know, so uh, you know, so then once we dug into it a little bit, we found out that somebody created uh, they must be mad with me or something and they created a uh uh a new email and uh, and they've got, you know, obviously our email addresses for all the trustees are on the the website, so uh, there's uh, that they knew who to target or whatever, it was, I said, you know, it was it was like, uh, one of them was like, wait a minute, you know, that's brand new board member, I don't, I haven't even got a chance to really meet them face to face yet. So I would never go in to ask for anything like that. So please be aware, everyone out there, and, and stay vigilant, because it's not getting any better out there. We just had another uh ransomware attack on the meat companies today that uh you know, there, it's just, it's a constant evil that's uh permeating the, the world and uh and we just got to be vigilant. And the only other thing I got is a couple of weeks, it will be, uh I'd like to say happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there. And I hope you have a safe and blessed Father's Day, and of course, first day of summer is coming. Okay, Melissa?
Uh, nothing from me tonight.
Okay. Uh, item ten, Plan Commission, Paul, are you gonna do the chair update?
I certainly will, um the Plan Commission met uh in person for the first time in a long time. Uh, the meeting was relatively short. There was a uh three lot CSM that was proposed, the Plan Commission recommended approval. Uh, the only comments were concerning a fifty foot access drive for a flag lot and whether that should be wide enough for a public road. The applicant, it was the applicant's desire there not be a public road to, uh for the development to remain low density. Uh, and the Plan Commission approved that or recommended approval. The other two items were the amendments to the zoning dealing with the riverway that uh the board looked at previously. So we had to go back to Plan Commission for a public hearing, uh both public hearings were held. Uh, no one showed up or spoke at either one, and the Plan Commission recommended approval of those.
Okay, so now that would mean we'd need to uh, uh, motion to, for the application from Paul Goodwin on the three minor subdivision lots. Is there a motion to approve?
Stan, I move to uh recommend approval of the three lot minor subdivision at six forty two Galhad Road North with the following conditions, number one, parkland dedication fee shall be paid prior to village signing of the final CSM. According to the current fee schedule, the required amount is two thousand dollars. Item number two, individual lot grading and drainage plan shall be provided at the time of building permit application to confirm that a Item number two, individual lot grading and drainage plan shall be provided at the time of building permit application to confirm that adjacent pop property owners are not impacted by stormwater runoff. Item three, individual lot erosion control plan shall be provided at time of building permit application to prevent sediment transfer into adjacent property and village streets during building construction. Item number four, lots will be required to hook up to municipal sanitary sewer and water main at time of building construction. And item number five, provide a copy of the final CSM to the village after it has been recorded.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
A second that.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, further discussion? Uh, hearing none, all in favor of the approval of the subdivision signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, let's see, number C then is, uh, adoption of ordinance oh two, oh, twenty twenty one. Amending chapter ninety eight zoning article five administration uh, and enforcement section ninety eight dash one seven. Enforcement and penalties, void permits, approval requested.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, comments or questions?
If that actually would be ord- if it follows the normal ordinance numbers, it's twenty twenty one dash oh two, right? Melissa?
Oh, two twenty twenty one?
Well, she's got it.
Oh, all right. Number transfers. Melissa?
I don't think that's true. I believe that there's a different numbering system. That's accurate.
Really?
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Hmm. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of ordinance oh two twenty one signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And item D, adoption ordinance zero three twenty twenty one amending chapter ninety eight zoning article six. Special provisions, section ninety eight dash one five one. For St. Cray Riverway zoning approval request.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of ordinance oh, three twenty twenty one signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And on to personnel and finance committee recommendations. Claims approval requested.
Uh, Stan, can I move to prove the June first twenty twenty one non recurring claims of thirty four thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and fifteen cents?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Uh, is there any comments or questions? I will, I'm sure we will have some because I see Brian Riley has joined us from Aylers and, uh, I'm going to let him take, uh, over and explain, uh, the process and, uh, the and, uh, each one of the different, uh, uh, resolutions that we will be.
Then we have to go on the claims first, Dan.
Oh, for crying out loud, I thought I'd get through one today. Okay, uh, let's see, we've got claims, we've got to do, uh, Tim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Phil?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go down to the next, uh, the section, uh, Brian, uh, your show.
Well, thank you. Um, I wanted to, uh, take some time just to walk everybody through what, um, you should have in front of you is our pre-sale report will be easier to kind of, uh, take you step by step through what we discussed last time and how it has, uh, transitioned mildly, uh, to its final form. And then there are a number of resolutions that I'll uh, kind of describe to you in some measure of detail before you, uh, consider them. So, uh, if you recall last time, we had discussed a number of things. Um, first and foremost being financing of, uh, the villages portion of the state traffic highway thirty five project. Uh, subsequent to that, well, actually at that meeting was discussed also some forward looking aspects related to potential borrowing uh, over the next, uh, at least one year, if not two, and uh, identified was, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, what's with this Wisconsin Ave, uh, project, if that sounds correct, uh, and the villages costs associated with that. And then also you have a number of debt issues outstanding that we'll look through for potential refinancing. So, uh, what's on your agenda is for consideration. Some things could be, uh, shifted if you like. So it's always easier to start by throwing everything on the table and having the discussion, uh, and then working our way through the resolutions in a fashion, uh, kind of one by one, and then they all roll up to a single issue. So, uh, previously we had, uh, looked at some things and if I can bring you to, you know, the, the narrative content is really just for you to peruse, uh, and kind of give you some high level detail on the proposed issue of bonds. What I will bring you to is the first page of numbers. So after page six uh, of the document, it's actually then page eight of the PDF. And what we've done is we've built a bond issue that incorporates the sewer, water, street and stormwater, as well as the costs of next year's capital projects into a single bond issue. And then also looked at refinancing of debt. And there's a reason why we do it in this fashion because we have to help the attorneys draft the proper resolutions and they look to specific sections of law when they do that. And when you issue bonds, you, you need to look to chapter sixty seven and there is an enumerated list of things you can issue bonds for, uh, without referendum approval. And so we need to point to things like how much are you spending on sanitary sewer? How much are you spending on water? The stormwater happens to be really a function of the general fund and not in enterprise funds or utility like sewer and water, and it is within the right of way. So it's easier just to call that streets. So streets and stormwater are combined into a purpose. That also allows us then to break out the various repayment sources and then allocate out pieces of the total amount of debt. So then we can look to those repayment sources to transfer in money. Then we also look to how much you would need to levy in taxes on an annual basis to support the debt. So as you're looking at this page, you're seeing a few things. You're seeing an issue sized at two million fifty five thousand dollars. Of that, when you look below, uh, five hundred and five thousand is strictly for refinancing purposes. All right? And of the two million fifty five, we have five hundred and twenty thousand for sanitary sewer, seven hundred and sixty five thousand for water. And then streets and stormwater and then some other smaller pieces, uh, like some landscaping and property acquisition within the right of way are allocated to the tax levy as new money and that's two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. And those to some degree are going to relate back to the resolutions that you have on your agenda. If I bring you up to the top portion of that page, you can see we have a twenty year repayment schedule. And the aggregate debt service is in that left section of the line. The right, right of the line is then broken down by where does that money come from? So again, on that left side, you can see the principal structure as well as the total principal and interest due on an annual basis. And you can see it varies to some degree. And then as you continue from left to right, you can see how much of that annually is coming from the sewer utility, the water utility, the tax levy. And then how much of it is strictly related to refinancing and the issues that we're looking at refinancing as of right now are paid from the levy. And so you can see there where once the, the refunding portions are done, the debt service drops and we have more of a level structure. All right? Uh, and so we have built in some, some budgets for costs of issuance in order to arrive at a total issue size. And our goal is always to be conservative with our estimates, uh, so that we can size the issue appropriately and establish what are essentially not to exceed amounts when you consider these resolutions. We can, we can make adjustments and we can always go down. If at any time we need to go up, we have to restart the process, which simply means we need to come back to the board potentially and, uh, reconsider one or more of the resolutions. But you've got final costs other than next year's project is an estimate. Uh, which is perfectly fine. You can borrow in advance of a project and you can use reasonable estimates in that regard. And so that money will be there and available for that project next year. We have also estimated the interest rates for the issue and we have used uh, so our analysis of some similar transactions that have gone to market recently. And then we've, we've added a little, uh, cushion to current rates and that's about point two percent over the current market. And so each of the, uh, principal amounts is its own maturity and will carry its own rate to some degree. When you blend that all together and weight it by, uh, the principal structure, if you look in the middle part of this table, you'll see our estimated kind of blended interest cost. And most specifically, we look at the true interest cost. And we're estimating as of right now that that's about one point eight three percent over that entire structure. And then if you include all your costs, you know, if you consider it like an APR on a consumer loan where all of the fees and expenses are included, we have you at about two point one percent. So if we were to go to market basically today or this week, rates are stable since we last built this, we should expect to do a little better than what we're projecting right now. All right? So I'll pause quickly and see if there are any questions on this page because this gives you the real high level overview of the total debt structure and then how we're looking to the various repayment sources to support the debt over its entire life.
So we are including the Wisconsin street project in this? Or not?
This ha- this has it in there. It's really up to you if you want to include it. It can always be backed out. But for the purposes of crafting your agenda, the notion was we would build it in and then you can talk through it. We can always back those numbers out and adopt the resolutions in a, in a different, slightly different number or a reduced number.
Um, I think actually, uh, Brian, isn't the only portion of Wisconsin Street North, it's just the streets?
You're, you're correct. Just the streets and the acquisition. And I think there's a little bit of stormwater curb and gutter in there too. The utility portions are not included because we had discussed potentially using your, uh, ARPA money and eligible expenditures for those funds are sewer and water projects. And so allocating those dollars to that portion or those portions uh, seems reasonable and just borrowing for the piece that would be repaid from the levy.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll move on then. And what I want to walk through next are the various refinancings. And we've included them. They're not tremendous savers and it, it has a lot to do with the fact that there's not a lot of time through the final maturity. Uh, but they do save some money and we are aiming a little high on rates. And so we always have the opportunity to monitor and pull these out. If the market moves away from us, you still need your new money because you got to pay for your projects. You don't have to refinance. So if the market moves away from us, we can back all of this out. All right? And if it ends up costing you more than it does now, that obviously makes no fiscal sense. And so we can make determinations as we proceed in time. So they save a modest amount of money. If we were to use today's rates, they would certainly save more and they'd be, they'd be better candidates. The other aspect of this is we're, we're adding a debt issue and you already have an existing debt portfolio with a number of issues. So we'll, we'll, we'll be consolidating some of the debt, which relieves some of the administer administrative burdens. Uh, on an annual basis, you're making, probably semi annually, you're making payments on these loans. And so now consolidating them, you have a single debt issue to look at. So instead of having those three issues outstanding and then adding another one, you know, on net, w- we're, we're actually reducing how many issues you have outstanding at this particular time. So as you're going through here, we're looking at three promissory notes that you already have, uh, existing. And the first one would be a, a note from twenty fifteen. Uh, you can see the savings analysis on an annual basis on that far right side and it's aggregated to a total. And so from there then, um, you know, we want to make sure all those numbers are positive. And certainly on an annual basis, not all of them are. In the aggregate, they are. Again, if we use today's rates, these would all be positive savings annually and it would be a, a value add from a refinancing perspective. We're also looking at, uh, your twenty seven, one of your twenty seventeen notes. Uh, there are two of them that you have outstanding. Uh, this one requires a little more from a refinancing perspective. You can see our savings estimates on the right side. This one is a little better uh, in that you've got about twenty four hundred dollars in cash flow savings. And I should say, you know, we always look at these on a present value basis, right? So you've got a stream of savings over time, but how much is that worth today in today's dollars? And so we discount that. And, uh, that net present value benefit gives us some uniformity of measurement. And so, um, you know, that's about thirty five hundred bucks or a little over two percent of what you're refinancing. Ideally, we want these numbers to be somewhere around five percent. And we would approach that if we were using uh, current market rates versus the point two percent over current market. And then finally, you have another, uh, a little bit larger, uh, note outstanding from twenty seventeen. Uh, this one is a little stronger because it is larger. And so when you start to absorb some of the costs, the economics can move away from you quick, quickly when the debt is relatively short and, and in small dollar size. And so this one clearly is a little better. Uh, saves about four hundred, forty four hundred dollars, uh, over its remaining life or almost six thousand dollars on a present value basis. All right. So try to highlight some of those key metrics that we would typically look at. So again, they're not super strong savings. Uh, the savings would be there if we executed today, plus you would consolidate debt. And so then, uh, I may be able to pause again and see if there are any questions with respect to the refinancing.
Yeah, Melissa, the, uh, twenty fifteen note, what was that for? Actually, I want to know all three of them.
Um, Brian, do you know what the twenty fifteen is offhand? I know twenty seventeen, there was a, I think one was a public works garage. The other one was, uh, the Mack truck and a catch basin project. The twenty fifteen, I'm not, I don't have that offhand. Brian, did you have that?
I'm looking at the documents. There's, there's usually a reference, but it's not jumping out at me immediately.
Was that Lakeview Drive, Melissa?
Oh.
Could have been.
That was.
Yeah, that was right when I started. Okay.
And the important thing with this, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, is with these refinancing, these three loans, it doesn't extend the loan twenty years. They're still going to be paid off the normal days that they would, the normal year they would have. So because that was my concern, I didn't want to extend it for a Mack truck that we're not going to have in twenty years. So Brian.
We are amortizing them over their original lives. And so I, I am looking at that document and so the original face amount was two hundred and forty five thousand dollars for the twenty fifteen note. And the reference to the projects is Lakeview Drive, Pine Street, East Bank Court and Lemon Street Projects.
Okay.
Um, if you can bear with me, I, I do have all the documents. I just got to open them.
So the finish date remains the same as, okay.
And what is there, you know, there may be just a little bit different from the dating scheme perspective. So maybe the payment dates aren't exactly the same, but it will mature a final maturity in the same year as you originally had them set forth.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the original on, uh, this twenty seventeen issue.
Yeah, I think we know what those two are, Brian.
Great. I can tell you the original face amount, but, um, beyond that, I, I don't have all the details right.
Well, and, and you said, you know, they're modest savings, but, uh, I know one thing that this board has, uh, we've worked hard on is we'll take every modest saving and any big savings that we can take. Where, uh, that's, uh, I, I appreciate your, uh, information on this and, uh, I, uh, I would like to be able to go say, hey, take that low money right now because, uh, you know, the economy isn't going to, you know, all of a sudden go lower.
Well, to, to that point, uh, even if rates stay the same, as we move forward in time, the economics of savings will deteriorate rapidly and it, and, and there just won't be another opportunity. So you're not likely to do this again. When we can establish both new money, a substantial amount of new money with refinancing, it's far more efficient because we're able to spread those costs across the wide base. Um, so you save more, uh, per se. And again, every day we move forward in time, even as rates stay the same, you have less time to amortize those costs. So the economics will move away from you. So the economics will move away from you very quickly. So we will continue to monitor the market as we move closer. Selling the bonds, rates go up and they're not saving money. We will immediately tell the village, I'm aware, and we can back them out. All right. So nothing, nothing is set in stone. Once you adopt these resolutions, they merely uh, are the initial authorizations to essentially proceed and send the public. Notice of your intent to issue bonds for these stated purposes. So from there, we had talked about your, your general obligation borrowing capacity previously. And I, it's not probably news to you that you're in a fantastic position. Uh, the next page has a table that sets forth all of the principal amount, principal requirements on an annual basis for the debt that you have outstanding. Obviously, we will refinance as proposed here, those three prior issues. And so we don't want to double count them, so we back them out. And so with the new bonds, uh, you would still have about ninety percent plus of your available geo borrowing capacity. So you're, you're really in tremendous shape from that perspective. And for a community of your size, um, you know, you don't see many places that have retained that much borrowing capacity. So uh, certainly, um, you know, the board, uh, over its history has been good stewards of your uh, of your, uh, of your financial well being. And certain, you're, you look great from this perspective. So really probably nothing. To dig into deeper or otherwise point out with respect to this particular table. All right. So uh, I think importantly, we want to understand the levy impact. And so what we've done here is we've taken all of your debt outstanding. And then we've shown both the principal and interest requirements. So how much do you need annually to make the payments? Now, we also understand that you're using revenues or transfers from some other funds beyond just the levy. To make these debt service payments. And we've built this in. So we've netted out the transfers that are coming in. To make your general obligation debt payment. So those are coming from water and sewer utility. All right. And we've done the same for the allocable portions of sewer and water for these bonds. And so when we net out the debt transfers, then we arrive at what you're levying for debt service. And I think it's fairly obvious that you have a big drop down from twenty one to twenty two. And that has everything to do with the fact that this is the last year of payments on your twenty twelve bonds. All right. And there was a substantial amount of levy associated with that debt. And a lot of it, I think, had to do with the village hall, actually, if I'm thinking about this correctly. Uh, there was some borrowing done at that time uh, for improvements to that building. Uh, I think you had a capital campaign that went on too. But there were a number of projects from two thousand and four refinancing and a lot of that was tax levy tied into that. Um, and so that debt will be extinguished. And so you drop down substantially. And so this is the part where I do want you to look at this structure, right? So you go from a little under two hundred thousand and you drop down to around a hundred and twenty thousand uh, for a few years. And then you have another leg down after that, uh, after some of that prior debt is exhausted that we're refinancing. All right. And so if you want what I would call some measure of um, tax rate relief. You can achieve that with this structure. If you want to kind of level things out. And have the same roughly dollar levy and or tax rate. You know, on the right side, they're going from forty cents per thousand to twenty four cents per thousand. You do have the latitude to push some principal up into the structure. So that you don't have as big of a drop. Or you could say, I like the way this looks. Let's maintain this and proceed. So I am looking for a little bit of feedback on your desire as a taxing entity. On, on how you want your levy for debt service to look. All right. Because uh, certainly what you don't want is, you know, your tax rate going up and down, up and down. Uh, you know, to some large degree, you want to provide some measure of certainty. So there's nothing wrong with having some step downs like this. And it does afford you some latitude as you move into the future to take on some additional debt service without causing a corresponding spike. In the levy and the mill rate. Or we could flatten it out a bit on the front end. If you wanted to try to maintain the same trajectory, we could push up a little bit of. Um, the tax levy portion of the debt. And so it's a little flatter on the front end and still provide some step downs in the future. So I would look for a little bit of, of, of your, take your temperature on that and give me some feedback. Cause we still have the opportunity and it does not impact the size of the debt. It only impacts the structure. So your resolutions are unaffected. But we do have a, the latitude to have some flexibility here and play with the structure a little bit.
I like the resolutions as they stand. But uh, we didn't get a chance to talk about it in finance. So. Uh, you know, we don't have this document that you're looking at. I don't know if it was anticipated that you.
I sent it out to everybody by email.
Okay, I can share my screen too, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I sent it out last week. Um, Brian, the one concern I have is I know we discussed without getting too much into it. That we may not have, um. Funds from the water sewer fund, um, as much as we had to repay this. And I know we had talked about, we could put that on. The tax levy as well. General obligation debt, we can put on a tax levy if we don't have it from the funds, correct?
Then if that is the case and you have some concern, maybe that does warrant the way it stands right now. Because you get back to about the same place if you absolutely needed to. So if the revenue in those utilities diminishes to some great degree, you still have to make the debt payments. And because of the obligation debt, you have the authority to levy. An unlimited amount by both rate and dollar amount. And so even though you intend to use water and sewer revenues to transfer here and abate a portion of that required levy. You will always have uh, the authority to levy a hundred percent of the debt service. So um, that may argue then, Melissa, that we kind of ignore what I said and I, I rolled the tape back here. And uh, and you leave it as is because if you do have to levy for those dollars, certainly, um, you're going to kind of fill those gaps potentially.
Yeah, Brian, and we, we discussed that after you presented last week. I think we kind of brought that up. So Melissa brought that, this brought it back to the table today. It's a good point.
So the way you have it in the chart right now, if I'm understanding it. Are the payments going to be quite a bit? Is, are you explaining it that the pay- repayments will be quite a bit higher the first few years and then it drops off? Or are you asking if we want it to be the same payment over the twenty years? Which I think is what our current bond kind of was. It was basically the same payment over the years.
Correct. And then, um, you know, you haven't added as much debt recently, right, since twenty twelve. So when that payment is made, you're going to step down to a new norm of around a hundred and twenty thousand. And then some additional debt will be exhausted in the future. And then you'll step down again. But that assumes you take on no additional debt that you levy for, which is unlikely. So it's nice to have a little room in there so that as you do take things on, you need to buy equipment, you need to do a small street project. Then you can levy the dollars, um, you know, so they don't spike up again in the future. You can fill in some of these gaps over time without causing uh, the levy to jump up.
Okay.
To your point about the, the revenues available from utilities and the absence of the available revenues. Uh, you still have to pay the debt. And so again, it might be nice to have that, those gaps in there. So that, um, you're not jumping up, you know, all of a sudden.
Like how you have it.
Yeah. So the way it is now would accommodate both of the scenarios where of course you're going to need to borrow again to some degree in the future. And if you needed to levy for the utility portions, uh, you can fill in for some of those step downs without the taxpayers necessarily feeding, feeling that immediate impact.
Right. Cause I think that's what the board has always tried to avoid. That we don't want sharp drops down and then all of a sudden it spikes up. So if we can keep it kind of as steady as we can with that and still allow for future debt if we need it.
Well, understanding that, I think I can massage it a very small amount. So that twenty two is, I think you have some certainty of utility revenues probably going into the next fiscal year. Does that sound accurate or no?
Um, I'm sorry, repeat that.
So the certainty around the utility revenues, um, you know. I don't know how much you have, you know, of confidence for say the next fiscal year.
Uh, it's really hard to say at this point.
That's fair enough. And I think we should leave it as is based upon what you're describing. I think we should leave it wholly alone. And, and not be concerned about uh, filling in some of those gaps. Because then you have, then you have the leeway to take on some additional tax levy without having a correspondent in, increase in the tax rate. So this would be like it, it mitigates the risk associated with that, the way it's set up right now. All right. That's, that's what I have for prepared information, just for your uh, kind of high level overview. And then if you tie the resolutions, um, it's required that you, when you want to issue bonds, again, that you look to. The enumerated purposes under law and then you build the resolutions around that. And then there, there's also a resolution on your agenda for, um, which you can see there being. Uh, the issuance and sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds and it has no dollar amount attached to it. What that does is it combines all of those other resolutions into a single bond issue. Which is what we've just looked at being the two million fifty five thousand dollars. So you have all of your underlying enumerated purposes and they all roll up to a single issue with that final resolution.
I think you've done an outstanding job and I kind of liked where we're going. Like I said, I just soon. Get the, the chi- the money cheap and uh, and go when we can. So uh. You know, anybody else got comments or questions or we start voting on these or uh?
Just want to say thank you. I think you did a really good job with those charts and explaining it. Uh, it isn't the easiest thing and I appreciate that very much.
I tried to not throw too much back at you for decision making in the midst of a board meeting, but there was only one thing. That we needed to get clarity on and, and we got through it. So thank you.
Anybody else? Well, hearing none, I guess, uh. We would start with resolution twenty twenty one oh six. Initial resolution of the village of North Hudson, Wisconsin relating to the issuance of general obligation bonds. Is there a motion?
Stan, I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero six. Initial resolution of the village of North Hudson, Wisconsin relating to the issuance of general obligation bonds. In an amount not to exceed five hundred and twenty thousand for sanitary sewer system improvements.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any kind of more can I answer questions on this?
These need a roll call.
Yeah, oh, I. Okay, uh, well, let's start with Phil.
Uh, yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And it's a unanimous decision. I will say yes. Okay, next one, twenty twenty one to oh seven.
Stan, I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty one dash oh seven. Initial resolution of the village of North Hudson, Wisconsin relating to the issuance of general obligation bonds. In an amount not to exceed seven hundred and sixty five thousand for water system improvements.
Second. Second, thank you. Uh. And let's go the other way this time. I'm going to say yes, Tim.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Uh, Amy?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Phil?
Yes.
Thank you. And uh, then we go to uh, see twenty twenty one oh eight.
Stan, I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero eight. Initial resolution of the village of North Hudson, Wisconsin relating to the issuance of general obligation bonds. In an amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty five thousand for the village's street improvement plan. Program.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Amy. And uh, I think we've had all the discussion. So uh, Phil?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
And Kirk?
Yes.
And Amy?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And yes, thank you. Okay, that brings us to twenty twenty one oh nine.
Stan, I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero nine. Initial resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bonds. In the approximate amount of five hundred and five thousand of the village of North Hudson, Wisconsin.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil. Uh, and we've done the discussion part. So uh. Phil again?
Uh, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And yes. And okay, I think the last one is twenty twenty one ten.
Stan, I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty one dash ten. Resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds. Series twenty twenty one A of the village of North Hudson, Wisconsin.
Ryan, second?
Second.
Thanks, Phil. Uh. That just background noise I just heard?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and I'll say yes, Tim?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Phil?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And just, uh, just as a clarifier, uh, we just, uh, we run. We talked with both Paul and Brian and Melissa earlier today. And uh, because the people that want to give us or uh, lend us the money. Uh, they want to know that we, the board passed every one of these resolutions in the amount. Is that correct, Brian Riley?
Um, generally, yes. So there's a, a person that's not part of this discussion that uh, is intimately involved. And that's the village's bond counsel or bond approving attorney. Um, Bob Toffe at Freiburger Buchanan and, and uh, he's the one that drafts all this up, keeps us all in. complying with law. And so yes, he absolutely is interested in. Uh, in uh, the outcome of this discussion and then going forward. You have to get past this point to even sell the bonds. So this is the first and really only hurdle, uh, as that, as, as things unfold. And then basically you're meeting in July, we'll come back with a binding proposal that I can act on. That will essentially lock everything in and then we'll just proceed to closing. So we'll be done uh, essentially in about six to seven weeks.
Excellent. Excellent. Uh, let's see. I think that takes us through that one. So Brian Riley, thank you so much for your information. I know that uh, I've been through this a few times that I know uh, Mary and Amy being new, it's like. Holy cow. You know, so uh, there's, you know, it's a village, uh, uh, finances and. And stuff is uh, not the easiest thing to understand. I know uh, one of our former board members, uh. With twenty years and was still always hammered and then discussing what was going to go on and stuff. So I appreciate everybody's patience and uh, and diligence in uh, reviewing this. And Brian, I hope you have a wonderful night. Go sell that low bid for us so that we can uh, get this done in six to seven weeks.
We'll be shaking the money tree. Um, and I will say the person who gets the brunt of the blow is Melissa. So I'll thank her. And I'll do so again, uh, in July. But there'll be a lot of documents and she's going to get the pen out. So um, thank you for her time as well.
Absolutely. No, she knows that. Uh, you know, I was remiss last month. It was clerk's month and I didn't uh, say what a great job she did. You know, usually there's, the league will give us something about that, but she's done an excellent job on this. And uh, we thank you all for uh, everything that you're doing. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thanks. Item twelve.
Thank you.
Public Works.
Stan, we, we. Yeah, we did meet and we have nothing to bring forward. Um, from my cable board. Uh, committee seat, I would just mention that we received a new device. And we should be able to get that. We're hoping to get it up and running. and we should be able to get that, we're hoping to get it up and running for our next public works meeting, which would allow us to be able to, uh, be back in the hall and on Zoom at the same time, depending on your preference. So we're, we're, should have that ready for the next public works meeting and then for sure for our July meeting.
Excellent. Okay, and, uh, then bring us to item 13, uh, public safety. Tim, what do you got for us?
Uh, Stan, yes, we did meet and we do have a motion to carry. Um, I will welcome that opportunity. Who wants to read it? Amy, can you read it?
Hold on if I can find it.
I got it.
Be out there. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, move to approve Pepper Festival's parade detail option number four for no parking and the closure of Michelson Street North from Lemon Street North to Sixth Street North and Sixth Street North from Michelson Street North to Monroe Street North and Monroe Street North from Sixth Street North to Fourth Street North for the parade route and breakdown area on Saturday, August 21, 2021, from 10:30 AM to the end of the parade. No parking signs to be posted showing no parking on Saturday between 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM on those streets, routinely open for normal parking during the Pepper Festival. Is that it?
Uh, that's, uh, do we do the other one too? Chief, when you move?
Oh, you asked me one at a time.
Do more at a time, okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
So, so we need, so we need a second, yeah.
I second that.
Okay, so, um, this was carried over from our last meeting, of course, because we had more discussions. Melissa from Pepperfest, I'm sorry, Michelle, Michelle Pepperfest is on call. She's been working with the chief closely throughout this and she can kind of, uh, the chief is bringing up a map. She can kind of explain the process of what Pepperfest will do for this change and kind of the overall and chief can comment also. So I'll let those two take it over.
Mark, do you want to start or do you want me?
I can start, that's fine.
Okay.
So, um, this, uh, the, the Pepper Festival Parade, uh, when Pepperfest approached the villa or approached me and then also the public safety committee, it's been through a couple of renditions. And so that's why when you look at your, uh, motion, it says option four. Option three had previously been, uh, moved through the committee and after some reconsideration and, and some information from the, um, the construction meetings that I've been attending, it was determined that there may be some flow issues from the construction and potential lack of access to the west side of the village, um, which might make the closure of Seventh Street during Pepperfest and then subsequently some other streets, uh, directly around the Pepperfest grounds difficult for, um, the flow of just normal traffic on that Saturday. And so when we determined that that may be an issue, we went back to kind of the original uh, route, which you see on the map in the green is, is really, with the exception of the fact that it really starts a little bit further to the east typically at Lemon and Michelson. This then moves it just a block to the west and allows for north, south traffic on Lemon Street to be utilized. Um, if there is a need to go around from the, you know, from the, uh, east side to the west side. In the meeting that was at this morning, um, because of the holiday, that annual or that weekly meeting was moved to Tuesday, I was, um, assured by the construction company, um, that Sixth Street North between Michelson Street and Monroe Street will be open and be completely finished curb and gutter sidewalk, uh, and the, the concrete pouring. And so that will allow for the use of that particular street for the parade. And then actually they're going to be moving to the north to that segment, um, which will help be helpful because really there will be no through traffic from the north, south on, on State Highway 35. And so we did put back in this option, uh, and the public safety committee met at a special meeting last week. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, um, and, uh, pushed forward this particular motion that has been made, um, to put it back to the, relatively to the original route. Typically it will, it would go one block further south to St. Croix Street North, then back Fifth Street North to Monroe, uh, to kind of create a little bit better flow. But, um, I'll let Melissa or Michelle talk about some of the changes that Pepperfest has tried to implement to, uh, make the parade more feasible and to have a less impact on those that are, are dealing with the construction and road closures and those types of things. Uh, but this particular lineup, I think will be a good flow. The only thing that I yet have not received back is a notice from the state and whether or not a permit will be required or a, um, in order to detour Highway 35, my, uh, email to the state representative was it's already being detoured because of the construction. So I don't anticipate we're going to have to get any additional permitting, uh, put in place in order to utilize or to utilize the Highway 35 between Michelson and Monroe and to shut down those streets. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that you're aware, we have reached out and, and if I get that information, it's, it clicks with anything that we've talked about today, I'll bring it back to the board and have that discussion. Michelle?
Um, the, basically the only thing that I, that would be different than normal, I guess, um, would be our lineup area is a lot smaller than normal. So we'll be just decreasing the parade size to about 50%. Um, so it'll be a lot smaller parade. So, um, less people coming in to get into lineup. Um, that's probably the only difference. Um, we'll have a lot more volunteers just to attract people. Um, we'll be putting out in our social media, our website, just directing people how to get to the parade lineup, how, where to go to, uh, watch the parade, um, things like that. Um, but otherwise.
Is the Michelson diff, uh, what street does, uh, A Street, one, two, one of the streets different as far as setup at all, Michelle?
The lineup typically is on Lemon, 10th and partially of Lund Street. Um, so this, the lineup would move to Eighth Street.
Eighth Street, thank you.
And historically we have sent out notices to those, um, residents that lived along the street where the lineup is. So we will notify those people on Eighth Street North of the no parking in advance of the actual parade day. Um, and make sure that they're aware of it. And I, and I think that in the past it's been well received.
Yeah. So we'll do the same thing. We'll send out those letters. Pepperfest will do that in advance when we get those letters.
No, I thought the map was excellent. I mean, uh, you guys did a great job on that and, uh, I'm glad to, you know, I mean, uh, to be able to use that, uh, brand, brand new pavement out there on, uh, on Sixth Street is going to be pretty awesome. I mean, uh, the, uh, it's, uh, we shouldn't have any of the band members tripping or anything like that. It's been a possibility of the past. And I don't think we've got any horses coming in for, you know, for, you know, for riders for cleanup. So that should work pretty good.
And that map is all Michelle, just so I had nothing to do with it.
Well, I thought she did an outstanding job.
Thanks.
Okay. So let's, we're going to move it. So we got a, uh, we got, uh, a motion that we haven't voted on, I believe.
We have not.
And, uh, there we go. We're all back to normal. And that's, uh, let's see, there's no spend there. We were, uh, we don't have to go through that. All in favor of the, uh, motion that, uh, for Pepperfest request on street closures and no parking, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, I thank you. And, uh, I know there's a lot of people that are excited that, uh, the Pepper Festival Parade will go on and Pepper Festival is going on. So that's, uh, that's huge. Uh, I know, I mean, we're shortening up the parade. So I don't know if I'm going to let the mayor ride with you or not, but I think I will because he's pretty excited. He loves coming up here for, for our parade and everything. And, uh, and I'm looking forward to a great Pepper Festival again. Okay.
And Stan, one of the, one of the comments, Stan, uh, on Strive to Survive update. So we did create a Facebook for Strive to Survive this week. We'll start promoting it. We are starting to promote individual businesses throughout the week just to get them out there. So, um, I've collected two for the first week. Those, uh, those promotions went out to the Neighborhood Watch, uh, uh, distribution list. And then we'll start creating this, we created the Facebook, we'll start promoting in the other ones as we go forward. So we're taking two or three businesses each week and just letting people know that they're out there. A little history about each business, kind of explaining, um, how to get there, if the construction is definitely affecting them and also just talking about, uh, you know, support your local business if you can throughout this construction. So that is starting to move forward.
I thank you very much for all your work on that, Tim. I mean, the signs have been great. And I've been getting the emails for, uh, discussing the businesses and you guys have done a great job. And, uh, you know, I'm, uh, and I, you know, encourage everyone to support our local businesses. Uh, they are surviving, but, uh, it's, uh, always a struggle. They're down a little bit, but, uh, you know, everything is going ahead and hopefully the construction will go as planned.
Uh, Stan, there's a second motion there too.
Yes, yep, sorry.
You want me to read that?
Yes, please do. I apologize, but that's, I can, I can interrupt that between those two. So it's, that was a good break.
I worry.
All right. Move to approve Pepper Festival's parade detail option number four for no parking zones for parade lineup on Saturday, August 21st, 2021, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the 500 and 600 blocks of Eighth Street North, 600 and 700 blocks of Michelson Street North and the 400 block of Monroe Street North with no parking signs to be posted no later than Thursday, August 19, 2021 at 9:00 PM.
Thank you, Brian. There's a second?
Second that.
Thank you, Amy. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That's.
That's all, Stan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, public welfare committee, Kirk?
We did not.
Nothing?
Oh, we did not meet, sorry.
Okay. And how about park board?
Uh, we did meet. I'm going to try to run through this quick. We've been here for a while, but we do have our one in five year plan. Um, if anyone has any questions other than the one in five year, please feel free to ask. Uh, the one year plan features expense, um, expansion of Whister Festival. That's what we did behind the village hall. It was a great, um, icebreaker for the new hockey arena. Uh, Buck Thorne is, we're trying to figure out how we can get, uh, goats to clean up a lot of our parks. A lot of our parks are run by through that, uh, moving the park equipment. We do that. We're moving that behind the village hall. That's how we can try to show movies for kids to come and see. Uh, Glen Oak Basketball Repair, uh, the corset, the court itself is a little bumpy. Uh, we're trying to find a place to put a, this is the one year plan. We're trying to find a place to put the pickleball court. Uh, it's one of the fastest, most, this is my number one thing. My mom keeps bringing up, but we're trying to find a new place or where we could put a pickleball court for people to play that fastest growing sport. Uh, we have a unity tree. We're trying to find someplace we could put a tree that everyone could light up together. We could do a little festival and then park cleanup. Our goal has always been to just clean up our parks. Uh, you know, if people have, we're really not looking to spend a ton of money, but we love trying to move things forward. So that's park cleanup. Uh, that's our one year plan. Are, uh, any questions on that?
I like this.
Yep, go ahead.
So for the pickleball court, because I've had people asking me about that too, Kirk, uh, and I've been told there is an existing tennis court that we can use. Is that accurate? That would have to be modified or is it an entire new space that, uh, is being considered?
Uh, pickleball courts are a little bit smaller. Uh, we don't really have any tennis courts. The, uh, North Hudson Elementary has a tennis court.
I'm aware of that.
We have a couple basketball courts that we're trying to see if we could expand that. But no, we don't technically have any tennis courts.
So as of this time, you're looking at options and it is not yet determined if you're going to retrofit and change an existing surface or if it's going to have to be brand new.
Oh, um, it would be change or add on.
Okay.
So we're, we were talking about maybe running into one of the basketball courts and then seeing if the backside that we could add on. Right. Yeah, that's all the stuff.
People are just asking, they are very excited about this. And so I just want to be able to give accurate information.
Yep, that's, it's absolutely like, would your question is absolutely right. That's what we're trying to see if we could do A or B, or we don't want to lose any basketball courts, but we're trying to add on.
Great, thanks.
All right.
I know Patrick's got some great equipment that, uh, that he can level out certain areas if we can determine which ones they want before we'll put pavement down on them. So, uh, we've got the equipment. I know, uh, there was a earlier, or a proposal that was, it talked about for paving some areas and, uh, Patrick said, oh no, we can do all that, uh, pre excavating and stuff with our equipment now that we've got. So appreciate you throwing that in there, Patrick. And, uh, and, uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to that too. I've heard it's a fun, it's a definitely, it's one of the fastest growing sports, especially for old folks. And, uh, and, uh, you know, that would be a lot of fun to be able to say, hey, come up and play pickleball up here, you know, so, uh, you know, uh, appreciate everybody's work on that.
I just wanted to say too, I'm also really personally very excited about this Buck Thorne project. I love that.
Yeah. And that's, that's such a good example of how we, or I try to work and Patrick's the same way where we really want to do all these, but we're going to do them a different way. We're a different community. Uh, we're going to find the best way that we can do it and not just throw all of these other things on the taxpayers. So that's just how we work and Patrick's been wonderful for that. Um, just to go on the five year plan, try to go super quick. Uh, we have a GSI. Um, that's, we're just trying to outline, this is our five year plan. We're trying to outline all of our parks just so we could identify them more. We're trying to look for, build a bike trail between Eaglewood and Malibu Park. Um, install disc golf, disc golf in a couple of our, uh, different parks. We actually have a little more space than I ever expected. Uh, we're talking about how we can get different play equipment for the villages and unique ways, not just go buying them, but maybe we could find someone that wants to donate them, uh, add bathrooms and power to a lot of our different parks. I really think we could use that to use them for graduation and stuff that has a lot of things. That one's really dynamic. That's why it's part of the five year plan. Uh, Browns Beach retaining walls. There's been a couple of questions about that. Uh, we're waiting for the, the GMI system to kind of lay it out for us. Then we're hopefully having Kevin could look through that. So we could apply for a grant to get that fixed. That's a major priority of ours, but that is absolutely front row. Um, the Pepperfest community improving the land behind village hall. Uh, we're kind of working on what their work, we're waiting for them to see what they're doing that. And then we have a monarch garden that we're also going to try to add maybe a shelter too, so you can go sit there and stuff like that. But that's just a quick update in our one and five year plan. I always ask if anyone has any ideas to please bring them towards us because, you know, we're only a couple of people and a lot of this stuff is up to us to bring them up to me. So.
Appreciate that. I'm sure we've got people with ideas. I've seen that from, uh, from the earlier campaigns. So, uh, I, uh, I hope everybody kicks in because, uh, yeah, one of our, yeah, we have a lot of nice parks and making them nicer is, uh, is always good for the community. So, uh, that's, uh, it's, uh, something that, uh, you know, we've got, uh, right people in place. I think we're, we're moving ahead, you know, in a good, uh, good direction.
A question for Kirk? When will, um, when, when the plan is finalized, will it be up on the website?
Yeah, um, uh, I guess, what do you mean the plan is finalized?
Well, either five year plan. I mean, there's a plan that's up there right now. That's like a, uh, to 2019. So when the new plan is done, will it go up there? So people can take a look at it and get excited because it sounds like really nice stuff.
Yes, we're also tweaking a little bit, this a little bit, and then we'll send it to Melissa to post or that. So yes, um, we're also adding a little stuff because we always meet a little weird with you guys. We meet the first Thursday after you, but the answer to your question is yes. Uh, once we finalize this, the tweaks of it, Melissa will throw it on the website.
Super. Those are great plans. I, really exciting ideas. Thank you.
And just an FYI for everybody with the website. I know Melissa is getting really close to having, uh, a new, uh, updated version of the website that, uh, you know, for the village, that's, uh, hopefully going to be more user friendly and little, uh, you know, actually have pictures of the village in it rather than, uh, stuff that the, uh, the, the web builders, uh, put up there for us. So, uh, that's coming along and I think we're, uh, getting real close on that. Is that correct?
Yeah, some kind of meeting via telephone with the, um, the designer on Friday to review some of the options she gave us. So, yep, we're getting closer.
Thank you. And let's see, that's done the public welfare, public parks. And now, uh, the board may convene into closed session. And now, uh, the board may convene into closed session. Okay, we are now back in open session at the nine twenty-one, uh, and we need a motion on
Let's just make sure the video is recorded.
It is.
It's it.
It's on.
Good.
Perfect, thank you.
Upper left-hand corner. Stan, I move to uh, send the authorized red line version back to our village attorney um, from the water service agreement we received from Hudson.
Hey, Tim, there's a second?
Second.
Thank Kirk, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. And Amy shaking her head. She's ready for this, Dan, too. And uh, okay, so uh, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, Melissa, send that stuff out and uh, I don't believe there's anything else that we need to address, so I will uh, adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-two. Thank you, everyone. Uh, I'm sorry, Mary and Amy, that uh, we didn't used to last this long and it's not your fault. There's just a lot of good stuff going on in the village and uh, and as we always try to do, we're protecting our uh, our taxpayers and our residents. So, uh, thank you very much, everyone, for your uh, great participation again tonight and uh, we'll see you the next time, as they say, a quick trip.
Thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.
Toodle-oo.